I'll call the meeting order. Please drive. Where the regions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic stand on nation under God in the visible even justice for all. Morning, everyone. Last few days have been pretty nice. Very to the middle of January. First on the agenda is sound strategies, internet update. Zach?
Good morning. Here.
That's fine.
Good morning, council. Thanks for, I know I talked to some of you guys last week, but wanted to take some time to provide you guys an update on our next level connections program as well as some of the other opportunities that are going to be coming up this coming year. So, sort of just little overview, reminder of next level connections program. It's a state broadband program that allows internet service providers to partner with local units of government, secure dollars for broadband area, like the underserved and uncertain underserved areas in Whitley County. It's an $80 million bucket that's available. We have three providers that were interested in it, that we were engaging ultimately. There's going to be one that's going to ultimately be applying for the next level connections program, that's Lictel. I will have hopefully information, them wrapping up their application today on the exact amount of addresses that they plan to serve in that specific area too. I think some of you might, we also have a packet of letters that are there as well. One thing about the next level connections program, I'm not asking for a match today for the next old connections program, like since Lictel's not requesting a match at this time, but at a further date, do you want to have you guys consider possibly putting together a match for these applications? These applications are highly competitive typically to win these applications. You, it requires the local government to put some type of match to, to win the, win that award. And then, so yeah, today in front of you, I believe we just have a letter of support, like for you guys to consider. And it's really, it's like, just I'll asking for overall support of anyone who would put an application, like to, at this time, just Lictel. So, would like, would recommend if we would be willing to do a letter of support from there. I know we have about 18 other letters from everyone from the Farm Bureau to Parkview Hospital residents, Congressman Banks, our state representative, state senator, and then just local businesses too. And then looking past B, there will, our large, with, NLC also too, there'll be April 3rd that week, there will be an opportunity for competitive applications where essentially another provider could bid against that provider's application. And there's, it will be a time that we could provide a match there to get a higher score. That's why I'd like to consider like a later date of us putting a match aside. I will also have some other providers. We have one that's going to, it's going to speak briefly today, but also over the next couple of months, like to have some other providers come in to give you guys kind of an overall picture of what it costs to serve some of these underserved and unserved areas. And then with the B program, that's a larger program that we'll be working on actually this month, and really be recollecting those, doing the speed tests and collecting more data to kind of refine those areas because there's all, I guess, one of the providers today will speak, some of these guys are privately funding some areas. So, we'll have some updated, if we do in March and April, have some updated accounts on what those, some of those addresses are. And then with the B program, that's going to be, that's the $868 million program, the federal government, the federal infrastructure program. That, those dollars, we broke it up into three tranches. The first tranche hopefully coming late summer, early fall, underserved areas. And as the, as it progresses with B, the last tranche is what's called high cost areas. And so, those are areas that are going to probably most likely have to be served through like a fixed wireless solution. But for the first tranche, it'll be just like the next level level connections program where it's, providers apply for the grant and then have local units of government ideally partner with them and provide some type of match to get awarded the grant. With that, I will hit pause if you guys have any, have any questions.
We had met, I talked with Zach on Friday, Dale's office, Tom, John, myself. You have a sample of a letter of support, only not a dollar amount. Dale took it one step further after the commissioners' meeting last night and put the county's signee on it. So, we have a, we do have a letter ready to go if we choose to approve that today.
Yeah, and the Friday is the application deadline for this NLC grant. So, as soon as you guys get that signed, I'll include that with all the other letters that we'll get to any of those providers that do end up putting in an application. And I guess one thing, last thing I'll mention is, these grants, like I said, are highly competitive. One challenge is a lot of times is, this grant just opened up January 10th and it closes this Friday, February 9th. And so, providers have to move very quick with local governments. I mean, typically it's like three and a half, four weeks. The state will post the addresses that are eligible for each county. At that point, those providers have to do all their engineering designs, have to put what the cost looks like for these, and then ideally come to a local unit of government and, and request that match. And a lot, in some of the other counties that I work with, just so that typically the commissioners can move quickly on some of these opportunities. The county council has appropriated those dollars ahead of time. So, then like those applications do come, come up with providers that can move quickly. Just to, I think, I know I told, should share with you guys in Allen County, the previous round of next level connections, we had four providers that applied. There was a total of $25 million total investment that was secured to serve about 4,500 addresses. Out of one of those applications, we did partner with a provider, put a match of about $700,000 to serve about 1,400 addresses. This next level connections round, round four, same thing, the county council appropriated dollars, total of $7 million for broadband in Allen County. And then we threw a, the kind of negotiation process with the provider, we ended up, we're putting forth about $4.2 million to serve the, and this will serve all of Allen County. So, just, that's kind of giving you a picture of what some of this, this cost, cost for passing, which is a home or business, it can average anywhere between $5,000 and $25,000 to, to build fiber to that area. But I also, I'll also bring some other solutions too, for you guys to consider. There might be even outside of some of these grants that we might not be able to leverage with like a fixed wireless solution is also that we'll share with you guys too.
I was at the commissioners' meeting yesterday specifically to hear your presentation. I thought you answered a lot of questions yesterday. We did, I thought it was really a nice presentation to understand the process. You don't, to go into it better than we did last time.
Yeah, like I said, the biggest challenge is I totally understand the position you guys in, like the state really does not give you enough time to move on some of these applications. That's kind of the nature of why they set it up, it's highly competitive. So, there's got to be like a lot of collaboration oftentimes between the county council and the commissioners to be able to move quickly on these things because a lot of times it's even the timing of your meetings won't even make it, allow it to work for you guys to appropriate the funds and then for the commissioners to move on it. So, but yeah, I guess I do have a provider that will be here shortly to, to give you a little bit of overview. They're, they're not putting in an application, but they are going to be building out an area on, over near Catalina Road that they'll share a little over 200 addresses that they're going to be planning to build upon for the upcoming B program. Very good. Thank you, guys.
I deal with economic development. I just wanted to kind of follow on and add to that a little bit. We appreciate everybody's patience and understanding on the process. And so, you know, originally we were thinking there may have been an ask yesterday or today of some kind of appropriations, but clearly we're not ready to do that. The letter of support and the other letters of support will still let Oprah know that, you know, we are aware of the issues, we want to help the residents and the households here. Once we get a better understanding of the full cost, we'll, we'll bring that to you and get you that at a time. So, it was a better understanding of what we're talking and not just kind of piecemeal this. So, again, I appreciate your, your working with us on this. And the letter of support, we feel is, is of course that we're not committing to any dollar amount, but we are telling Oprah, along with the other letters, that when Lictel does their application, that word's important.
Please, your gentleman's not?
Well, yeah, he's about five minutes away. I actually was going to tack on to this too. I did, well, to fill time for, Chris Todd, Northeastern RMC. I was, I came today to also just kind of speak on this same issue in regards to the letter of consent. Northeastern's also putting in ours. And all that saying is the same thing that we've said the whole time. If anybody wants to come in and solve this problem for Whitley County, we're in support of that. So, what, you know, that's, getting on board with this is pretty easy. So, I definitely would encourage you guys to look at that letter of consent. Like I said, ours was going to probably come in today to get it to Zach. But as these things are coming in, we're also working with several different providers. Right now, nobody's come through all the way to the end of it. Everybody's been real excited about, hey, we want to serve all of Whitley County. And so, we've been in cooperation with several different people as far as right away, poll attachments, letting people know where our engineering drawings are, giving them like almost unfettered access to the existing infrastructure that's in Whitley County, which helps things move a lot faster because every time these guys call, they're on fire. Like, like Zach said, it's highly competitive, the window's super short. And so, they're like, hey, we need your help and we need it turned around by like, you know, three days from now. So, we've been, we have been actively participating with anybody, basically exactly what this letter says, right? Anybody that wants to come in and try to solve this problem, we just, the more people that are in Whitley County, the better service we're going to have for all of our members that are in Whitley County or just the general, the people that are in Whitley County. So, you know, right now we have two providers out in the country, there's really just one. So, anybody else that wouldn't get in here is going to be good for everybody involved. So, consider whatever they're saying. And you know, I know it comes down to like appropriating money to it, getting it, getting behind it. But it really does make Whitley County a better place to work, live, all the way around, more attractive for employers if you can, if you can support remote work, you know, home school. And now the schools are doing a lot more asynchronous stuff. So, you gotta be home to be able to do homework and things like that. And in some places in the county, there's just no way you can do it. So, I was just here to kind of voice my support, let you guys know what we've been doing behind the scenes too. And whenever this comes through, know that we're going to be helping whoever it is that comes through for this pitch to be able to try to serve people. So, that's all. Thanks, guys.
Real quick question before you go, please. RMC's involved, Northeastern RMC's involved. There's our resources, use them, or are you partnering where it is beneficial for Northeastern RMC? Are you going to receive funds, payments, compensation, be a partner in any sort of way with these, with whichever company comes in and gets it?
Sure, no, it's a great question. The absolute, I mean, the only compensation that we are going to receive is a straight poll attachment license agreement, which is really more of just the legality. It's somewhere in the neighborhood of like 18 bucks a year. If you're on one of our poles, then you have to lease the space on that pole, whether you're a telephone company or a fiber company or anything. So, we can't tell one person who's been on there for 50 years and been paying this poll attachment fee, now somebody else comes in and doesn't have to pay that fee. But that's the only, that's the only compensation that we're getting from this at all. There's no type, there's no type of partnership, there's no type of an agreement to where we're making any kind of money off of this. It's just strictly trying to make sure that the resources are available with the county. That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Any other questions for anybody?
We understand that from the start, you guys have opened your doors, say we'll help do anything we can.
Yeah, yeah. And those.
Let me ask you another question.
Sure.
So, that $18 a poll per year?
Yeah.
That helps with the maintenance of the polls?
Yeah, and basically.
And to make sure that groups go out, monitor them, replace them?
Yeah.
And it just adds into?
It just, it just goes into the operations and, and maintenance budget. What it ends up being, those polls are, they're depreciated over, I think, 30 years or something like that. They last a pretty long time, but eventually they need to be replaced and then the man hours to do it and all that. So, all of that, that 18 bucks a year goes into a bucket and then the membership doesn't have to foot that, you know, because it's not necessarily part of the deal. That makes sense. Thank you so much. Yeah, no problem.
Before you go, I have a question. What's, can you explain the difference between what Costco just got done doing with their internet as far as hanging it? I think RMC was involved in that. But versus to have companies come in and board on the ground and, and deal with an outsourced, the debt of company? Now, I understand Costco, RMC handles that.
So, there's been several different RMCs across the state. There's 38 different, it's separately owned and operated companies. One of the big misconceptions is that we're all somehow combined and together and controlled, but we're not. So, the Costco RMC, they did decide to go broadband at home as a separate, like they opened up a separate company. So, Costco Connect is their company that's running fiber in their county. And so, it's, it's their, it's their deal. So, they're doing, I mean, they're boring, they're, they're doing everything connecting to not only their members, but just anybody in the, in the county. Actually, we've even kind of talked to them about on the, on the west side of county where they buck right up next to like Lawwell area where it's.
At the end of my.
Super, yeah, super underserved area out there. Even our CFO lives out there and she's got Starlink, like she can't, there's no, there's no good internet access out there. But they, they are their own company, they decided to pursue that. And, and we just didn't because, just for, for a number of reasons, but really because Northeastern RMC geographically is mainly in Whitley County, but northwest and southwest Allen County is where the majority of our members are. And so, it was, it, our board decided that it was not, the financial burden would have been too great on the entire membership to try to roll out another $10 million project to do fiber in this county. Now, in, in counties where you don't have that, that demographic split like we did, then it makes total sense to try to, you know, and Portland RMC's doing it, probably Costco RMC, there's different places around the state that have spun up their own fiber division. And that's what you're seeing there. And so, what we had said for the whole time is that even though, you know, our board said it doesn't make financial sense, it would have put undue financial hardship on the company in general to be, to take off this big of a risk in a super competitive environment in Allen County. Whereas in Costco County, there's not a whole lot of competition. And so, it made a lot more financial sense. So, I hope that answers your question. But that's why we've always said, we can't be the whole part of the solution, but we want to be part of the solution along the way, which meant partnering with anybody that we can and being really open and available with the, with the infrastructure that we have in the county already.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Morning, thank you. My name is Jeremy, I'm manager of government affairs for Comcast Corporation. And I appreciate the opportunity to be invited by Dale Buick and Zach Sand to present to you an investment we're planning without the government subsidy. Comcast is announcing a 219 rural home expansion of our network from the Allen County border. And I have a map of it, I can pass around and show you guys. And I'd like to thank, by the way, Dale Buick and Zach Sand for making it easy for us to make an investment here. While we're not planning to participate in round four of next level connections in Whitley County, we do anticipate reviewing the other applications in round four for Whitley County in the competitive challenge phase to see if we can do better. Unfortunately, the very short timeframe was, was hard for us to turn around and engineer a project here for this round. But we, like I said, will review and try to compete in the challenge phase here in Whitley County. So, we look forward to doing that. Additionally, as you know, we, we do plan to participate in the 800 plus million dollar B program as well. And so, I can pass around this map of the 219 investment, home investment we're making now, and then also take any questions you might have. And thank you for having me. Here's. Any questions, concerns? Just stunned that we're making investment?
Is this your first investment into Whitley County?
No, sir, we've, we've had some fiber in the, on the very edge of the county, in Long Island County already, and it's an extension of that. But to your point, it's been a very limited investment to this point. But I, I want to recognize Dale Buick and Zach Sand's efforts to highlight Whitley County and encourage us to make the investments. We look forward to continuing to expand our network here.
How did you, did you say you're going to connect 200?
And 19 rural homes, yes, sir.
And how did you come up with that? Just.
Our engineering department, you know, we, we were up, we knew you'd be disappointed, we weren't participating in round four and wanted to do something. And this extension made business sense. So, we think that in our business as usual builds, we can just go ahead and do this without any kind of government subsidy. As you know, many of the rural homes will require a government subsidy. I like to say, you spend a million dollars to get the two farmhouses, you know, you, you'd need 500 years to make your money back, right? And nobody wants to do that. So, that's, it's like the old electrification days that required a great deal of government subsidy.
So, for this project you're showing us, you wouldn't be coming to us asking us for any matching bonds or help or grant or?
No, sir.
Or?
No, sir.
But in the future, if you would expand, you would possibly?
You know, in the programs that the federal and state governments have set up, they award points in applications because remember, you're not just competing against each other in the ISP space, you're also competing against other counties as well. And so, like in the B program, for example, I'm assuming there'll be some kind of points awarded for any community matching. And I always say, you know, you can do a nominal match. You know, you don't have to, for example, in Boone County, Indiana, they just did a $10,000 matches. In, over in Delaware County, they, they're doing $50,000 matches. So, you can do nominal, you don't have to do the multiple, multiple millions of dollars. But certainly, if you want to give us money, we'll take it.
Well, we don't. We expect you to, you're the one that's.
Yes, sir.
We expect you to.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. So, and I respect that. Yeah, I respect that very much. You know, Comcast never did participate in subsidy programs. In fact, we skipped the early one called ARDOG. You remember that program? Because we were, as you say, opposed to taking government subsidy and felt that it was counter to our values, et cetera, et cetera. But as time has gone on, you know, we have to participate. It's, it's the old electrification day where the government subsidized, overwhelmingly subsidized the electrification of farmhouses. It's the new electricity, I guess, right? Here's my business card, every day is one.
What's your timeline on your 219?
Construction is beginning this year, I, I expect it to be done this year. And, and as we build a home, we can turn them on so that you don't, all 219 don't have to wait for the entire, and we'll have promotional and advertising and things go out to those homes. And we're, we're excited about it and we think it's going to help a lot of people, 219 families. Proud of it.
We, I appreciate.
Yes. Thank you. Do you know, we appreciate the pro-business environment here in Whitley County.
Do you know if there's plans to expand past what you're currently doing in the future?
You, like I said, right now, I don't have anything that's been engineered and developed at my engineering department for Whitley County beyond this. But as I say, in the competitive challenge phase, I think Lictel and SURF are going to be planning to submit round four application. And we plan to, once those are released by the state, take a real close look at them and determine if we can do better, if we can ask for less subsidy than they asked for. And if that's the case, perhaps we would be awarded that over them. But it's possible that they make the best deal and we can't do better. But I promise you, we'll take a close look at it.
Nice. Jeremy, one question before we wrap up. Jeremy, you gave speech to the previous round of NLC. And anytime one of the local unit of government has partnered with you guys and it contributed anywhere from 20 to 25% of a match in your guys' application, how many of those?
You win, you win, you win 100% of those. So, that's tremendously exciting, right?
Yeah. So, historically, when a local unit of government is partnered with the county, or partnered with providing these applications, they provided 20, 25% of the match. They, they awarded 100% of those applications to those out, those communities. So, for instance, I guess, we just, we're working with Comcast in Allen County to serve 100% of the county. So, if it's awarded, NLC round four, we would be the first county to have been able to serve with broadband and that because there, they partnered with them, 30, 20, 25% per application on, on those to.
And when you say Eastern Allen County is a lot like Whitley County, the underserved Whitley County, and we're going to get 100% of that, I think, in this round because of the local matching. So, I'm reading the room, I'm a little bit of a people pleaser, I can sort of see you're anti-subsidy to private businesses, particularly large private businesses. So, I'm kind of maybe going one way or the other, but I don't want to, to Zach's point, say that it isn't a valuable use of your tax dollars. If in fact you value getting every home high speed and, I think you do, because we know that that's how we're going to participate in this economy in a better, more profound way. So.
I'm going to speak for myself, not anyone else.
Yes, ma'am.
My, how I view this is, is the unknown. You know, from what we dealt with in the past, it's unknown millions that the county would be able to come up with for future matches. And that's what's, that's the concern.
Sure.
I feel I can't afford not knowing, I'm not going to saddle the county for years and years and years with this debt.
Yeah.
And then that's it. For me.
Sure.
It's the unknown, what you're going to come back next. You know, because it's not going to complete the county. You've got to do a section. So, each section, from what I'm gathering, is a matching grant for the next, for the next set of offerings.
And it's getting more and more expensive, you know? And we hope that this 800 million, plus million that the state is getting, and B is going to make a dent on this, maybe, maybe we will get you served. I think with the people you have in place here, Sand and Buick, I, I think you are in a really good position just from having them as advocating for you.
Well, we don't want to be in a position where we're doing a section here for Casa County and everyone else, sorry, we're not going to be able to talk about.
And that's why I say this, and I mean this. I think it's immoral to use a single penny of tax dollar to build to a home that already has high speed internet. And I think that's the paramount question here when you fund a project, is, is every single one of those homes underserved or underserved today? And the answer is no, it's immoral in my opinion to subsidize a build to a home that already has high speed internet. Me, that's the test, to, to your very good point. You know, you got to look at the whole county and say, and, and I forgot to mention this, I have asked my engineering department to come back to me, and I don't have it done yet, with a full picture of Whitley County. And I know Zach and others have maybe done this already, but I want to see it on my phone team. And that is, what would the cost be to 100% serve Whitley County? And I'll share that with you. I'll bring that to you, you know, in a later day. I don't know when I'll have it.
Oh, you're locked in now?
But I'll, yeah, I'm scared to death of you guys.
We all have your number.
But my grandfather served on the Brown County Council for many decades. I understand the nature of a county council person. So, and I appreciate and value your perspective and your position.
Thank you, guys. Just to conclude, like I said, if you're willing to do that letter of support for, I'd say, I have one provider that will be participating in NLC round four. So, I'll put a letter of support from you guys for, for the NLC application for them. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can go on for several reasons.
Teresa, do you have anything for us to say?
No, Zach and Luke have done a phenomenal job for us. Definitely been a burden to tackle, I would say. It's definitely the expert in the sauce, guide us, and pull all the right people, they move together, she did this project moving. And he's definitely the expert in the sauce. Guide us and pull all the right people. They move together, she did this project moving. So I just thank you for your time. And I think with this B funding coming out, and I know multiple of you were at the commissioners meeting yesterday, and the number that we turned out to finish the entire county to make sure every person gets 22 to 25 million, the B funding, potentially funds everything. So I think if we all collaborate together, we could get almost all of our resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Being a SURF customer in the Chautauqua area, I am in support of the letter. My dealings with SURF on it, they have fulfilled their obligation in the installation on it. Downtime, I've been down one time. It was midnight to 6:00 a.m. and it was rejected ahead of time. So much better than Mercury that I was on. So I am in support.
That motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion by John, a second by Nick, that we approve the letter of support for our internet program. Discussion. Comments. Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the letter of support, raise your right hand. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Continue, David. I do have a letter. We changed, they overnight changed the logo, so it will be ready to go. So that's it. Okay, next. Brian?
Yes.
Everyone.
Good morning. I'm here this morning. It was a, it was last May, Davis Bridge. It had been repaired in federal insurance.
So your question, could we re-appropriate that money to your account after it's deposited in the county general?
Yes.
I make a motion to do so.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Thor, a second by Nick, that we take the check in and then we'll give it back out to Brian for his account to pay for the repairs on the bridge. Discussion. Hearing none, I call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those vote. Thank you. Mark?
Good morning. Mark Sturrock. Last month, came to you, turned the, one of the compressors on the rooftop here to go to the center and presented a price to replace that. And you'd asked a couple of other conservative quotes. I sent those to you, I believe, on the 19th of January, somewhere around there. But anyway, they came back, one was 17,311, the other one was $21,120. The third one was $23,793.40. So I'm asking for approval to move forward with the 17,311 quote. And then ask how you'd like me to pay for that.
Mark, I have a question for you. Is that compressor, is that a single-stage or two-stage?
Two-stage.
And I also take it that the five-year warranty is not added into that 17?
No. That would be an additional $1,247. And that warranty was less than the other ones.
So is that part of your request?
No, I was going to, well, I originally came and asked to encumber the 17,311 from last year's budget. But I didn't have the price for the warranty at the time I came to request that because it just happened. Since then, I got the price for the warranty. So I was just going to eat that out of my budget.
Well, what's that total? That'd be 18 something then?
He just wants to take that out of his working.
Yeah, I was just going to take the 1,247 out of my working budget. But I was originally asking for the 17,311 to be encumbered because I had that left over from last year. And didn't want to take that big of a hit for this year.
Tiffany, have you encumbered that money? I mean, where's that money at right now that we were?
It's still just in county general. So it has not been encumbered yet.
So it's still hanging from last year, so we need to make some action on it soon?
We've already closed out the budget year for '23, so we can just handle with an additional appropriation.
So essentially, that money's already been put back into county general. Okay. And I know you've got your budgets. You're very responsible with your budget as far as your total amount for the year. And don't really ever anticipate there being too much fluff in your notes. So I don't know that makes any difference if we do an additional appropriation now or at the end of the year. That's my opinion. I guess my opinion would be that we would just have a pay for it out of the budget now. And then coming into the year, if you get them, when you do come up short on the other things that you had that money in front of you, then we address it with the understanding that we had this conversation today.
I had a conversation with Tiffany, just exactly what you're saying, and I agree with you. We're just starting a new budget year. He's got plenty of money in there. Use the money out of your budget now. And we all know at the end of the year, if you're going to fall short, we know why. And then we'll appropriate it then. Is that what you're saying, right, Thor?
Yeah.
Okay, absolutely. I agree with you. Yep.
You see running into problems, Mark, with what you have in the budget?
Yes. I'll be back. It won't be at the end of the year.
Midsummer, early fall?
I would say midsummer, early fall.
I personally would like to see this being paid out of Q cap because that's what we use it for. It'd be a good place to take that money and leave you with the, with the money that you have. So I make a motion that we allow him to to have the go-ahead with the 17,311. And then also the five-year warranty is $1,247 and be paid out of Q cap.
I'll say that. That makes a lot more sense. That does. That's exactly what that accounts for. And I would support that. That's, thank you, Jeremy, that forward.
We have a motion by Tim, second by Thor, that we take the 17,311 plus the warranty money out of Q cap, leave your budget alone, and you got the bits like we requested. We appreciate that. Any further discussion on the motion in a second? Hearing none, I'll ask for the vote. All those in favor of taking this money out of Q cap, raise your right hand. All those same, both same. Thank you, Mark. Okay, Tip, you want to talk about the arcanic resolution notice?
I just, we just, we found out with the help of attorney that if we sign a resolution that allows us to advertise one time in the newspaper, and then if somebody would need additional advertising, we can do it on our website. Example being, if it takes on our tax rates, it would save probably $600 per paper to allow us to do one publication and then put it on the county website and have it, because you have to do that one three times.
And it would be more accessible.
Correct. So this is just to allow an explicit per user, so it's allowed myself to advertise on behalf of council. Commissioners have already done one for Kami and myself.
Re-development.
Andy, prepare this. Andy Boxford with the council. So this resolution number would be 2024-04. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We accept resolution number 2024-04.
I'll second.
Motion by Tom, second by Joan, that we approve resolution number 2024-04. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those, same passes. Do you have that resolution coming your way? Okay, next. Solid Waste Local Agreement. There are some additional papers in front of you that, yesterday, at the commissioners meeting, I asked for clarification. It's been a while, obviously, why the council has to approve the interlocal agreement. So, Andy, all the permission of the commissioners, Andy looked into that last night. I made copies of what he sent last night. He did a resolution, and you can read that. Basically, if we don't approve this, and basically it runs through us, then it'd have to go to the attorney general to be approved. Would this be resolution 2024-05? If we adopt it? We can see what his correspondence was. He went ahead and heard that resolution, which, with this resolution, if you see the last page, we would attach the interlocal agreement to this.
So this is an attachment? I don't have the correct one of the resolution. I didn't print it.
Yeah, so this was just essentially what he stated yesterday. This resolution authorizes you guys to have your president sign off on the interlocal. So it's everybody signing, saying, yes, we agree that you can sign the interlocal agreement.
I guess we're, I'm trying to understand why we're involved in this. It's because, I'm not sure if we're just agreeing to have our treasurer withhold funds and make payments or if we're agreeing to the total interlock agreement. That's my question.
I can answer that. I have a question for the attorney.
Does anybody, who's on the board, anybody?
I'm on the board. I'm in chair.
Can you answer that question?
So the county collects the fees because the district, not the district, I'm sorry, solid waste district doesn't have the resources to do that. So we, as a currency, collect some of your taxes. So that's all of this. We just do a currency. And then we pay something of a processing fee. I'm not sure where there is, maybe Thorne, remember?
To the county?
Yeah. I think it's like $30,000 a year.
It's $2 for a parcel.
$2 a parcel. So that's all of it. Because we don't have someone in there to fill, and then collect all the fees and all of that. So it just makes sense. And as you all know, it goes on the property taxes.
Well, and I can understand the council agreeing for making a motion for that to be done. But what about the rest of the, what about the rest of the?
Well, I mean, the commissioners already, we already signed it yesterday.
I know that. That's why I'm asking, why are, what are we agreeing to? I mean, what are we approving? It's very.
It's a financial component. So my, that would be, I mean, I'm not an attorney, but my guess would be that's why. Because there is a financial component to it for the county business.
It's, it's not very clear is what I'm trying to say on what we're signing, is why I'm questioning this. I, I think you did a great job with the addition. I liked it. And if this is what we're agreeing to, it's great. But I'm just questioning, what all are we agreeing to? Since this is already passed and we didn't have any, we didn't have anything in this. Which one is it? The one we just got?
Yeah. It says that if we need to improve it, it has to go.
Yeah, I understand that.
So I'm assuming that's why it's.
I just, I'm just questioning that.
This is the sound of the agreement that you guys have signed seven times over here.
And I understand that, too. It's just now I'm just kind of saying. I'm not saying he would. I'm just.
And it's, and it's not just the three commissioners that made the, the solid waste board are the ones that are responsible for putting this together and presenting it.
Well, they said if we haven't been presented, if we read it, I guess for somebody this old, maybe we would have someone come in and do a presentation. It's fine. I think, I think this addition would really help.
Yeah, I think probably years ago, when this was first put together, '25 or whenever along the solid waste district between the communities, it probably was. And over the course of time, it's just been accepted as it is. And that's probably why there was the presentation. I could sit down with you sometime and break it down if you like.
I would, I would like that because this is my third year, and every year I question. And so my book.
If you don't understand documents, it's good to question it rather than just sign it.
Well, I understand the document. I'm just not understanding why we're approving what was decided on when we had no input to it. That's my question.
Well, our input is that we assign, you all assign me other representatives to do that, have the input on that agreement.
And like our other committees that were on, we come forth to council to give that information periodically throughout the year, but we don't get that from this. So that's my question. It's given to us once a year. And all of it is not discussed throughout the rest of the year. So I would kind of like to see maybe a quarterly update on information on, on something like this. Possibly just some more information so when we get to this meeting, there's not questions.
And you guys are all invited to attend because it would probably be a good idea for the second Monday at 9:00 a.m.
Any other questions? So what's your question on the resolution that Andy?
A motion that we sign the resolution as.
That resolution number is 2024-04-5. Ask your motion, right hand?
Yes.
There a second?
I'll second.
Second by John. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving resolution 2024-05, raise your right hand. All those vote. Passing again. Again, I'll pass this down through. Okay, we do have an additional agenda item. Cindy?
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, about two weeks ago, I emailed you all about.
Okay, about two weeks ago, I emailed you all about my issue as far as the county has received a grant for the improvement of elections. I do have, I don't know, you've got, Tiffany, did you print anything out by chance? I have.
Did you just?
Yeah. Jennifer asked me to make sure I have all my. So this is all a core requirement.
Thank you.
Anyway, the grant money that we receive, that we'll be receiving, is twenty two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. Last December, I went ahead and purchased some of the items that I need, so I will be paying with this grant money, I will be paying the county back for what I purchased last year. Attached with this attachment is a, an estimate invoice, six 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 five, and it's for twelve thousand dollars. This is for new iPads, and I found this out that we're in a dilemma, because we have to purchase the items first, and then we'll get reimbursed. So I know it was too late, I contacted Tiffany, it was too late to do advertisement and ask for an additional appropriation. I will be coming next in March to ask for that, but I, basically, what I'm wanting is an approval to move forward to get these ordered, because we really want to have these before the election, and there's a lot of preparation that goes in with Jessica with these iPads. So, yes, I just want to get an approval that I can proceed and get these ordered, and then I'll come do an additional appropriation for the twelve thousand dollars.
Everything you need to purchase is covered by the grant?
Yes.
So it would be no money out of your county pocket?
No, and actually, on one of the pages, I, they, we'll get it within thirty five days, so once it's paid to the county, then we will get reimbursed within thirty five days, and that's a part of the correspondence.
And how will you pay for that, Tiffany? Will you just take it out of County General?
So just take it out of her budget.
Take it out of her budget, okay.
So, so I will need to come next month, right?
And then you'll reimburse that line item with that money?
Yes.
You'll ask for it back?
Yes. And plus, we have money, extra money coming, because I purchased something in December that's close to six thousand, so.
Shopping spree.
They're waiting for that.
I appreciate you giving the document, I just asked her to bring it so that we have proof that we would get reimbursed, because we have to buy first, and I appreciate that. Okay?
How long does it take to get the grant?
It says thirty five days.
This might just be, it's probably gonna, the timing's gonna be, it's not, I mean, I'm gonna come back and ask for the money before you get the money anyway.
That's true. I'm just, I just know that they're saying when I submit the invoices, those invoices have to be paid. So, and then when they show proof that the county paid for them, then they'll reimburse it. That's what the letter's saying.
Thor, can I move forward?
Yes. Well, we'll see.
I'll make a motion to allow Cindy to move ahead with the purchases.
I'll say.
That's covered by the grant.
Motion by Tom, second by Kim, that we allow the firm to purchase the election equipment. Any further discussion? And we will be reimbursed with grant money. Hearing no questions or discussion, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand, all those both. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any comments from the public? Okay, we do have minutes.
Make a motion to President Sessi, say it.
January third meeting, have a motion by Thor.
Second.
Second by Kim. All those in favor, raise your right hand, all those both same. Councilman Barrett?
Do we have a personnel committee report or a commissioners' report?
We have no personnel committee report this time. The personnel committee, we'd have nothing to report to the council this time.
Commission report? Robert, Teresa?
I have just a couple things.
Go ahead.
Is Kay here? Do you want to talk about your investment? I don't understand the under, on how well you did.
Come on, Kay.
Come on, Kay. I don't want to say.
You're not gonna do it. Get back over here. I can't hear you.
The county had a record year last year investing. We have one point three million dollars that has been earned in interest, and I'm going to continue those efforts. I've done two CDs last year, and I also have money in Trust Indiana, which is ran by the state, and that Trust Indiana money is money that is available to the county if you do need that, and I will be actually sometime this week, putting probably four hundred thousand dollars in that to put that over, right, about three million dollars. So that'll put the county investing six million dollars. So that's what I'm doing, and it's working out for me. Of course, it's because the interest rates, we're taking advantage of very high interest rates, we're getting five point four, it's about the average right now for the three things that I have, and I have the two CDs invested for nine months each of them, so come do this summer. So, and also the checking account is earning, I'm right, almost at four percent, so.
Thank you. We use this money to lower everybody's tax rate for everybody's tax bill?
That's not my area. How's that sound?
Hey, just, just for education purposes, tell us what our earnings was a year before.
It was under two hundred thousand dollars for all of the accounts. It was right at one seven, one hundred and seventy six thousand dollars, so I worked very hard to make sure that we're taking care of the taxpayers' money.
Thank you. Thank you.
And then also, so the jail, there's just one, well, not a minor setback. The roofing material that was sent us, it was put on, and then afterwards, the project manager does various checks, and he really started addressing. So we really pushed it to get that replaced. It wanted to seal it on it. It was guaranteed to last for, I don't know how long, but we didn't want that, so we pushed it. The company did an insurance claim, and we got the branding, put on the section, the roof detection material. Did push it back a few months, so just jail anticipated finish date will be late fall.
And how are they getting along with, they, they got started on replacing it, right?
It's done now.
It's done, they got it all done, all tore off and put back on.
And it was around a million dollar claim that we didn't have to deal with, but I'm really appreciative of it, and Commissioner Bates did a really good job advocating for the county. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. I have nothing more. Joan? Thor?
I have nothing, thank you.
Nick? Kim?
I have nothing.
Okay, Tom?
I have one thing, the January meeting, we went, did the board appointments and everything, we came down to the Savoli Library Board, I talked to one of their board members, because Alsnica Nevis ran out in twenty twenty three, and I talked to them, they put her back on the board until twenty twenty seven, so.
During that, one step further, I contacted Terry Musco Library, but they gave me a name of who they wanted on the board on, I thought it was just Tiffany. Did we have to prove this? I don't think we did. Yeah.
Usually they send a appointment, kind of like Nathan has for you guys today for your appointments for redevelopment, and I've not yet received that, so I don't know if it's coming from the library.
And you didn't get one from Savoli either?
I've received nothing.
I'll ask, ask them about, okay.
John, are you gonna see if they'll send us?
Yeah, form letter.
Very good. Anything else?
I have nothing else.
Yeah, I think there is a personnel.
Personnel committee after this.
Okay. Hearing nothing, the meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everyone.